The Legions will be led by Mr. Kundoff. Pastor.
Good evening, everybody. Let's pray. Thank you Heavenly Father for these great privileges to be here. We asking you, Lord, that you be over here and lead in this meeting. Asking you, Lord, to be with everyone over here in this place. Bless this place, bless this, everyone in this place. And we asking you, Lord, that the Holy Spirit be directing this meeting according with your will. And asking you, Lord, that you be glorified. That you give wisdom to everyone in this place, especially with those great leaders. Did you be put on the City of Clearwater? Thank you, Lord, for being great, and thank you for letting us have the life, and thank you for everything you're doing on the City of Clearwater. In the name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pastor, thank you very much for being with us. Again, let me welcome everybody who's in attendance. Remind you, please, that if you have a cellphone or other device that goes off, to please silence it so that it doesn't ring during our meeting. Want to welcome back Mr. Albritton, who was traveling and missed the work session on Monday. Welcome back.
Welcome to you, too.
Yes, and myself, for those of you who didn't know who asked where Mr. Albritton and I were. He was traveling, and I was also traveling. I was in Washington, D.C., representing the city at the White House, and just returned on Tuesday. That's why we weren't here for the work session. To my extreme right is our city manager, Bill Horn.
Good evening.
To his left is Mr. Hamilton, Hoyt Hamilton.
Good evening.
And to my right is Councilmember Bob Kundoff. To my left is Councilmember Jay Polglaze.
Good evening.
Councilmember Dave Albritton.
Good evening.
Our city attorney, Pam Aiken.
Good evening.
And our city clerk, Rose Marie Call.
Good evening.
We will now go to a proclamation for the Relay for Life Weekend. I would like to ask Jessica Sheets, from the American Cancer Society, to please join me up front. Get close. I showered. Whereas there are more than 1.7 million new cancer cases diagnosed every year in the United States, and whereas the American Cancer Society's Relay for Life celebrates cancer survivors and caregivers, remembers loved ones lost to the disease, and empowers individuals and communities to fight back against cancer, and whereas money raised during Relay for Life for Greater Pinellas 2019 supports the American Cancer Society's mission of saving lives, celebrating lives, and leading the fight for a world without cancer, and whereas the citizens of Clearwater and surrounding communities are participating in the American Cancer Society's Relay for Life for Greater Pinellas event at Coachman Park to spread awareness on the prevention and education, information, and fund life-saving cancer research and patient support services. Now therefore, I, George Kretikas, Mayor of the City of Clearwater, on behalf of the Clearwater City Council, do hereby proclaim April 6/7/2019 to be Relay for Life Weekend in Clearwater. Ladies, thank you very much for being here. We'll look forward to walking around the park. From what time in the morning do we start, or in the afternoon? 6 o'clock?
6 o'clock.
And y'all go through the night?
We go through 2:00 in the morning.
Until 2:00 in the morning. So we would encourage people to come by and support the Cancer Society and the Relay for Life.
Thank you.
Please say hello to everybody.
Thank you very much. Thanks for all you do. Thanks for your work. Thanks for all you do. For all the work you do. Thanks so much. Yeah, watch your step. Good work. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Are there any additional corrections to the minutes of March 7?
Will they be approved?
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes of March 7. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Anybody from the public wishing to speak to an item that is not on the agenda? If so, please come forward at this time. Make sure we have a card that was submitted to the city clerk, and you will ask that you give us your name, and you would have three minutes to speak.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members, Ms. Aiken, and staff. My name is Rudy Michaelak. Since the last council meeting where I submitted a conflict of interest related to HDA 2017-12002, there has been a newspaper article quoting numerous individuals, including a Mr. Joe Barden. Key to my comments today is that Mr. Burden, on October 1, 2018, submitted a withdrawal of the Hamilton-Denazio application for the reserve units, which was copied to Mr. Brian Angst. That opened the door for Mr. Angst, Kyle Lieber's, application on the same day. Please note, Mr. Burden's email read, and I quote, "Dustin Denazio, as the managing member of Historic Palm Pavilion LLC, has directed me as the owner's representative to withdraw HDA 2017-12002-10 Bay Esplanade. Also," he said, "please release 35 units back into the hotel density reserved." Mr. Burden relied on the planning department's knowledge of his other prior relationships with Mr. Angst, Kyle Lieber, Hamilton, and possibly Denazio to accept this email. Mr. Burden's withdrawal email is not supported, though, by documents in the file and is therefore invalid as follows. Number one, there is no authorization document signed by either Mr. Hamilton or Denazio for this project on file authorizing Mr. Burden to represent them. There is no document signed by each owner identifying who is the principal for which the authorization is on this project. On the original signed documents, Historic Palm Pavilion is only listed as a mailing address and not as a principal. Number four, both Mr. Ken Hamilton and Mr. Denazio signed and had notarized affidavits of ownership for their corporations dated November 30 and November 29, 2017, respectively, appointing as authorized agent Ms. Catherine Cole to execute any petitions or documents necessary to effect the petition. On November 30, 2017, Ms. Catherine Cole submitted the application for Hamilton-Denazio project, signing as the authorized agent. Please note, the project is listed as 10 Bay Esplanade, the Palm Pavilion address. Therefore, with an invalid withdrawal, no reserve units will return to the city, and no additional application can be made for the reserve units. So the Angst-Kyle-Lieber application and any further action taken should be revoked. Current newspaper comments by these individuals are talking points to cover their actions and not found in legal documents in the file. Thank you very much for your time.
Ms. Aiken.
Mayor, at the last meeting, Mr. Michaelak provided you with a complaint about an alleged voting conflict of interest, which he attributes to Councilmember Hamilton. The following day, there were two lawsuits filed pro se in Circuit Court. In review of the allegations against Mr. Hamilton, I find many factual misstatements and believe there is no merit to the allegations. Further, the determination on whether individual council members have a conflict of interest or a voting conflict is not a council decision. We will be responding to the litigation in a timely matter and will not comment further on pending litigation.
Thank you, Ms. Aiken. Anybody else in the public wishing to speak to an item that is not on the agenda?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Attorney Aiken, and staff. My name is Richard DeSantis. I'm a resident of Clearwater Point and have attended all the council meetings regarding the decade properties approval of the 850 Bayway Boulevard project. At the March 7 meeting, one of the residents raised the issue of conflict of interest by one of the council members in voting for the transfer of the reserve units. The conflict rose from the fact that he and his company held the units for a period of time and released them back to the pool on the very day they were swiped up by decade. His response during the part of the meeting for comments by council was, in essence, that he had no concerns, no conflict, since neither he nor any of his family members benefited economically. He stated that nobody in his family made a dime off anything alleged. At that point, the city attorney indicated that she would issue a reply to our claim. To date, the citizens of Clearwater have not had a reply from the city. Based upon this, our group can only assume that the city attorney has undertaken the same research as we have and discovered that, in fact, campaign contributions were made to the council member from groups and individuals linked to these transactions. Therefore, the citizens of Clearwater Point restate our claim that this council member's vote should be declared null and void, thus resulting in two votes for and two votes in opposition, and a tie, causing the motion to fail. Thank you.
Obviously, sir, you did not hear what the city attorney just read, so I will ask her to read it again. Ms. Aiken.
Can I summarize this time?
Yes, ma'am.
We are in litigation on these issues, and the litigation has been filed by two separate folks. The matter will be resolved by a court. I have reviewed the allegations. The very day following us being presented with the allegation, they filed the lawsuit. So clearly, it was not intended that I or anyone else have an opportunity to review them before they file the litigation. So we'll let it be resolved where they chose to resolve it, which is in court.
And also, Ms. Call, if we had a 2-2 vote, that does not mean that the application fails, correct? That it would be carried over to the next meeting?
Correct.
Okay. So again, if it were a 2-2 vote, the vote would be carried over to the next meeting for another vote. That's in our rules. It has been in our rules from day one. Anybody else from the public wishing to speak to an item that is not on the agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to ask the city attorney one question.
Mr. Hamilton.
Ms. Aiken, does any contribution to an elected official's campaign create any... A contribution to a campaign create a conflict of interest on any item that comes in front of me?
A voting conflict of interest?
A voting conflict of interest. Thank you.
I'm sure there are circumstances which could occur, but no.
There's nobody else from the public wishing to speak to an item that is not on the agenda? The consent agenda is items 7.1 through 7.8. Anybody from council or the public wishing to pull an item off the consent agenda?
Move approval of the consent agenda 7.1 through 7.8.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve consent agenda items 7.1 through 7.8. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Council, on behalf of Mr. Albritton and I, let me thank you for pulling item 10.3 and 10.4 off the consent agenda, and since that would have been on consent if we were here with your permission, and Ms. Call, it would be in order for us to move those two items up right now? Is that agreeable, council? Okay. Agenda item 10.3, Mr. Horn.
Approve the collective bargaining agreement as negotiated between the City of Clearwater and Fraternal Order of Police Clearwater Officers Bargaining Unit Lodge 10 for fiscal years 2018, 2019, 2019, 2020, 2020, 2021, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute, saying, Ms. Poirier.
Good evening. The current collective bargaining agreement between the City of Clearwater and the FOP Lodge 10 expired on September 30 of 2018. The parties have reached a tentative agreement for a new contract that was ratified by the membership of a vote of 112 to 2. The agreement is a three-year agreement providing for a 3% general wage increase for all classifications effective the first pay period after council's ratification. It also provides for a step pay increase of either 5% or 2.5%, depending on the years of service, and it will adjust all the pay ranges by 3% in that first year as well. Additionally, in the second and third year of the agreement, it will provide for a 3% general wage increase plus a step pay increase of either 5% or 2.5%, depending on the years of service, and will also adjust the pay ranges by 3%. It also codified a previous MOU into this contract that would increase the shift differential pay for 10% for the night shift, and it provides for a 5% assignment pay for officers that are assigned to the K-9 unit rather than a $40 per pay period premium. The cumulative value of this agreement over the three-year term is $2.3 million, and there are funds available in the 2018-19 budget to cover the cost of the current agreement, and future budgets will include the remaining years.
Questions for staff on agenda item 10.3. Anybody from the public to speak to agenda item 10.3? Motion.
Mr. Chairman, a move to approve agenda item 10.3.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve agenda item 10.3. Comments, council? Well, on behalf of all of us, let me thank the FOP Lodge 10, our police chief and his administrative staff for working through this, and obviously, our human resources staff. We are very proud of our police department, and we feel very safe and secure with the work that our men and women do every day to protect not only the residents but also our visitors, and we thank you for giving us this agreement that we can hopefully ratify tonight. Motion has been made and seconded to approve agenda item 10.3. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Agenda item 10.4.
Approve the collective bargaining agreement as negotiated between the City of Clearwater and Fraternal Order of Police Clearwater Supervisors Bargaining Unit for fiscal years 2018, 2019, 2019, 2020, 2020, 2021, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute, saying, Ms. Poirier again.
Thank you. The current collective bargaining agreement between the City of Clearwater and the FOP Supervisors Bargaining Unit also expired on September 30 of 2018. We have reached a tentative agreement for the contract, which was ratified by the membership with a unanimous vote. The agreement is a three-year agreement that provides for 3% general wage increase for the first year effective the first pay period after ratification by the council. It also provides for a step pay increase of 4% and will adjust all the pay ranges by 3% in the first year. In the second and third year of the agreement, it provides for a 3% general wage increase plus a step increase of 4% and will also adjust the classifications by 3% in years two and three. It also provides for a 5% job assignment pay for the sergeants that are assigned to the K-9 unit in lieu of the $40 per pay period payment. It also removes the 5% assignment pay to the lieutenants and instead has been added into their base salary, and this is cost neutral to the city. The cumulative value of this agreement over the three-year term is $612,000. Funding for the first year of the agreement will be provided by a mid-year budget amendment allocating general fund reserves in the amount of $226,000.
Questions for staff on agenda item 10.4? Anybody from the public speak to agenda item 10.4?
Motion to approve agenda item 10.4.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve agenda item 10.4. Comments, council? Again, thank you. You know, the good thing about our employees, whether they're the police officers, police supervisors, they work as a team, and I think we can be very proud of the work that our supervisors do along with our men because they're in that side-by-side, shoulder-to-shoulder, and we appreciate all of their efforts. So please convey to the membership chief our appreciation for the work that they do. Oh, sure, chief, you had your chance.
I just wanted to extend, Dan Slatter, police chief, Corporal Squonky, the president of the FOP, is on vacation this week with the Bean-Pasco spring break, and Sergeant Morley had some childcare issues, but both of them want to extend their appreciation for the councils.
Thank you. Thank you all. Motion has been made and seconded to approve agenda item 10.4. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Agenda item... Council, thank you for letting me take that out of... But I figured since it would have been on consent anyway. Agenda item 8.1.
Approve the annexation initial future land use map designation of residential urban or U and initial zoning atlas designation of low-medium-density residential LMDR district for 3143 Johns Parkway and pass ordinance numbers 9237-19, 9238-19, and 9239-19 on first reading. Mr. Delk.
Mayor, Council, Michael Delk, Planning and Development Director. This voluntary annexation petition involves .241 acres of property consisting of one parcel of land which is occupied by a single-family dwelling. The applicant is requesting annexation in order to receive sanitary sewer and solid waste service from the city. The property is contiguous to the existing city limits in all directions. The property currently receives water service from the city. The closest sanitary sewer line is located in the adjacent Johns Parkway right-of-way. The applicant has paid the required sewer impact and assessment fees in full and is aware of the additional cost to extend city sewer service to the property. Collection of solid waste will be provided to the property by the city. The city's Development Review Committee has reviewed the proposed voluntary annexation and recommends your approval.
Questions for staff on agenda item 8.1? Anybody from the public to speak to agenda item 8.1?
Move approval of agenda item 8.1.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve agenda item 8.1. Comments, council? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Aiken.
Ordinance number 9237-19, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, annexing certain real property located on the south side of Johns Parkway, approximately 400 feet west of South Bayshore Boulevard, whose post office address is 3143 Johns Parkway, Clearwater, Florida, 33759, into the corporate limits of the city and redefining the boundary lines of the city to include said addition, providing an effective date.
I move that we pass ordinance 9237-19 on first reading.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to pass ordinance 9237-19 on first reading. Comments, council? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Call.
Ordinance number 9238-19, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, amending the future land use elements of the comprehensive plan of the city to designate the land use for certain real property located on the south side of Johns Parkway, approximately 400 feet west of South Bayshore Boulevard, whose post office address is 3143 Johns Parkway, Clearwater, Florida, 33759, upon annexation into the City of Clearwater's residential urban RU, providing an effective date.
Move to approve... New to pass ordinance 9238-19 on first reading.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to pass ordinance 9238-19 on first reading. Comments, council? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Aiken.
Ordinance number 9239-19, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, amending the zoning atlas of the city by zoning certain real property located on the south side of Johns Parkway, approximately 400 feet west of South Bayshore Boulevard, whose post office address is 3143 Johns Parkway, Clearwater, Florida, 33759, upon annexation into the City of Clearwater's low-medium-density residential LMDR, providing an effective date.
I would move to pass ordinance 9239-19 on first reading.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to pass ordinance 9239-19 on first reading. Comments, council? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Agenda item 8.2. Mr. Horn.
Approve the annexation initial future land use map designations of US-19 Regional Center, US-19-RC, and Water, and initial zoning atlas designations of US-19 and Preservation P districts for an unaddressed parcel located between 2991 Gulf to Bay Boulevard and Old Tampa Bay, and pass ordinances 9240-19, 9241-19, and 9242-19 on first reading. Mr. Delk again.
This voluntary annexation petition involves 1.68 acres of property, which include .41 acres of uplands and 1.27 acres of submerged lands, more or less. The applicant owns 2991 Gulf to Bay Boulevard, which abuts the property immediately to the north, and is requesting this annexation so that this additional parcel is also in the city's jurisdiction for future redevelopment of the entire site with multifamily residential. The property is located within an enclave and is contiguous to existing city limits to the north and east. The property currently does not have water or sewer service, as the majority of the parcel is submerged land. The applicant is requesting annexation in order to develop attached dwellings primarily on the abutting parcel to the north and would include this parcel with any development application. The applicant is aware that the required sanitary sewer and solid waste impact and sanitary sewer and water impact and assessment fees must be paid in full prior to connection and of any of the additional costs to extend the city's sanitary sewer service and water lines. Ultimately, solid waste service would be provided by the city. The city's Development Review Committee recommends your approval of the annexation.
Questions for staff on agenda item 8.2? Anybody from the public to speak to agenda item 8.2?
Move approval of agenda item 8.2.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve agenda item 8.2. Comments, council? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Call.
Ordinance number 9240-19, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, annexing certain unaddressed real property located approximately 820 feet south of Gulf to Bay Boulevard, between 2991 Gulf to Bay Boulevard and Old Tampa Bay and Clearwater, Florida, 33759, into the corporate limits of the city and redefining the boundary lines of the city to include said addition, providing an effective date.
I move that we pass ordinance 9240-19 on first reading.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to pass ordinance 9240-19 on first reading. Comments, council? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Aiken.
Ordinance number 9241-19, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan of the city to designate the land use for certain unaddressed real property located approximately 820 feet south of Gulf to Bay Boulevard, between 2991 Gulf to Bay Boulevard and Old Tampa Bay, in Clearwater, Florida, 33759, upon annexation into the City of Clearwater as US-19 Regional Center, US-19-RC, and Water, providing an effective date.
Move to pass ordinance 9241-19 on first reading.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to pass ordinance 9241-19 on first reading. Comments, council? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Call.
Ordinance number 9242-19, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, amending the zoning atlas of the city by zoning certain real, unaddressed real property located approximately 820 feet south of Gulf to Bay Boulevard, between 2991 Gulf to Bay Boulevard and Old Tampa Bay and Clearwater, Florida, 33759, upon annexation into the City of Clearwater's US-19, US-19, and Preservation P districts, providing an effective date.
Move to pass ordinance 9242-19 on first reading.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to pass ordinance 9242-19 on first reading. Comments, council? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Agenda item 8.3. Mr. Horn.
Approve the annexation initial future land use map designation of residential low, RL, and initial zoning atlas designation of low-medium-density residential LMDR district for 3046 Merrill Avenue, 3035 Terrence View Lane, 3050 Glen Oak Avenue North, 3023 Grand View Avenue, 3077... View Avenue, 3077 Hoyt Avenue, all within Clearwater, Florida, 33759, into the corporate limits of the city and redefining the boundary lines of the city to include said additions, providing an effective date.
I move that we pass ordinance 9243-19 on first reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt ordinance 9247-19 on second reading. Anybody from the public to speak to this motion? Comments, council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously, Agenda Item 9.2. Ms. Aiken.
Ordinance number 9243-19, an ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, vacating a 15-foot-wide alley lying within Block A replat of part of Mandalay Unit Number 5, as recorded in Plaid Book 21, page 13 of the public records of Pinellas County, Florida, lying in the southwest one quarter of Section 30 Township 28 South, Range 16 East, Pinellas County, Florida, providing an effective date.
I move that we adopt ordinance 9247-19 on second reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt ordinance 9247-19 on second reading. Anybody from the public to speak to this motion? Comments, council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously, Agenda Item 9.2. Ms. Aiken.
Ordinance number 9243-19, an ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, vacating a 15-foot-wide alley lying within Block A replat of part of Mandalay Unit Number 5, as recorded in Plaid Book 21, page 13 of the public records of Pinellas County, Florida, lying in the southwest one quarter of Section 5 Township 29 South, Range 15 East, Pinellas County, Florida, providing an effective date.
I move that we adopt ordinance 9246-19 on second reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt ordinance 9246-19 on second reading. Anybody from the public to speak to this motion? Comments, council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously, Agenda Item 9.2. Ms. Aiken.
Ordinance number 9246-19, an ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, vacating a 15-foot-wide alley lying within Block A replat of part of Mandalay Unit Number 5, as recorded in Plaid Book 21, page 13 of the public records of Pinellas County, Florida, lying in the southwest one quarter of Section 30 Township 28 South, Range 16 East, Pinellas County, Florida, providing an effective date.
I move that we adopt ordinance 9247-19 on second reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt ordinance 9247-19 on second reading. Anybody from the public to speak to this motion? Comments, council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously, Agenda Item 9.2. Ms. Aiken.
Ordinance number 9246-19, an ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, vacating a 15-foot-wide alley lying within Block A replat of part of Mandalay Unit Number 5, as recorded in Plaid Book 21, page 13 of the public records of Pinellas County, Florida, lying in the southwest one quarter of Section 5 Township 29 South, Range 15 East, Pinellas County, Florida, providing an effective date.
I move that we adopt ordinance 9246-19 on second reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt ordinance 9246-19 on second reading. Anybody from the public to speak to this motion? Comments, council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously, Agenda Item 9.2. Ms. Aiken.
Ordinance number 9246-19, an ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, vacating a 15-foot-wide alley lying within Block A replat of part of Mandalay Unit Number 5, as recorded in Plaid Book 21, page 13 of the public records of Pinellas County, Florida, lying in the southwest one quarter of Section 5 Township 29 South, Range 15 East, Pinellas County, Florida, providing an effective date.
I move that we adopt ordinance 9246-19 on second reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt ordinance 9246-19 on second reading. Anybody from the public to speak to this motion? Comments, council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously, Agenda Item 9.2. Ms. Aiken.
Ordinance number 9245-19, an ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, amending the zoning atlas of the city by zoning certain real properties located generally north of Drew Street, south of State Road 590, and within one-quarter mile west of North McMullin Booth Road. Its post office addresses are 3046 Merrill Avenue, 3035 Terrance View Lane, 3050 Glen Oak Avenue North, 3012 and 3020 Lake Vista Drive, 3023 Grand View Avenue, and 3077 Hoyt Avenue, all within Clearwater, Florida, 33759, upon annexation to the city of Clearwater's residential low, RL, providing an effective date.
Move to pass ordinance 9244-19 on first reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to pass ordinance 9244-19 on first reading. Comments, council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously, Ms. Aiken.
Ordinance number 9245-19, an ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, amending the zoning atlas of the city by zoning certain real properties located generally north of Drew Street, south of State Road 590, and within one-quarter mile west of North McMullin Booth Road. Its post office addresses are 3046 Merrill Avenue, 3035 Terrance View Lane, 3050 Glen Oak Avenue North, 3012 and 3020 Lake Vista Drive, 3023 Grand View Avenue, and 3077 Hoyt Avenue, all within Clearwater, Florida, 33759, upon annexation into the city of Clearwater's low-medium density residential LMDR, providing an effective date.
I move to pass ordinance 9245-19 on first reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to pass ordinance 9245-19 on first reading. Comments, council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Agenda Item 8.4 is to be continued to a date uncertain. Is there anybody from the public wishing to speak to Agenda Item 8.4? Agenda Item 8.5 is to be continued to a date uncertain. Anybody from the public to speak to this agenda item? Ms. Aiken or Ms. Call clarify for us when it comes back to us, will we be re-advertising this so everybody will have to be contacted again?
Yes, sir.
Right. Agenda Item 9.1 is a second reading. Ms. Call.
Ordinance 9247-19, an ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, vacating a portion of a drainage and utility easement as recorded in Official Records Book 4398, page 362 of the public records of Pinellas County, Florida, lying in the southwest one quarter of Section 30 Township 28 South, Range 16 East, Pinellas County, Florida, providing an effective date.
Move to adopt ordinance 9247-19 on second reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt ordinance 9247-19 on second reading. Anybody from the public to speak to this motion? Comments, council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously, Agenda Item 9.2. Ms. Aiken.
Ordinance number 9246-19, an ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, vacating a 15-foot-wide alley lying within Block A replat of part of Mandalay Unit Number 5, as recorded in Plaid Book 21, page 13 of the public records of Pinellas County, Florida, lying in the southwest one quarter of Section 5 Township 29 South, Range 15 East, Pinellas County, Florida, providing an effective date.
I move that we adopt ordinance 9246-19 on second reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt ordinance 9246-19 on second reading. Anybody from the public to speak to this motion? Comments, council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously, Agenda Item 10.1. Mr. Horn.
Amend the city's fiscal year 2018, 2019 operating and capital improvement budgets at first quarter and pass ordinance number 9266-19 and 9267-19 on first reading. Ms. Castle.
Good evening, mayor and council, Kalyne Castle, budget manager. This is the first quarter budget review for the fiscal year 2018-19 budget. I went over the report with you on Monday, but I'd be happy to answer any additional questions you may have.
Any questions for staff on Agenda Item 10.1?
Move to approve Agenda Item 10.1.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 10.1. Anybody from the public to speak to this motion? Comments, council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously, Ms. Aiken.
Ordinance number 9266-19, an ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, amending the operating budget for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2019, to reflect increases and decreases in revenues and expenditures for the general fund, special development fund, special program fund, water and sewer fund, marine fund, parking fund, general services fund, administrative services fund, and garage fund as provided herein, providing an effective date.
Move to pass ordinance 9266-19 on first reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to pass ordinance 9266-19 on first reading. Comments, council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously, Agenda Item 10.2.
Approve an annual.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Ms. Call.
Ordinance number 9267-19, an ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, amending the capital improvement budget for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2019, to reflect a net increase of $5,811,509, providing an effective date.
Move to approve ordinance number 9267-19 on first reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to pass ordinance 9267-19 on first reading. Excuse me. Comments, council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Mr. Horn, you're up.
Approve an annual blanket purchase order contract to JW Harris Contractors, Inc., in the amount of $4,500,000, with the option for three one-year term extensions to provide the installation of natural gas mains and service lines and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Langill.
Good evening, Brian Langill, Assistant Director for Clearwater Gas System. This is our contractor that does all the installation work for our gas lines and service lines in the street in the right-of-way and serves our customer meters. And this has been accepted under bid number 25-19. JW Harris was the lowest and most responsive bidder on that item, so we're asking for your approval.
Questions for staff? Mr. Pogles.
Thank you. So this is an annual contract for 4.5, so business is good, we're expanding.
Yes.
Is that about our average? Are we expanding to the tune of about $4.5 million every? I mean, I know we're going into Pasco, I would love to get to Hernando, but...
We've been in the, right around the $3 million to $3.5 million historically in the last couple of years, but with the expansion, you know, growing so much in Pasco County, we're seeing a lot more customers come online because of all the new subdivisions, so that's why we're bumping that number up for this year, this coming year.
Thank you. Anybody from the, any other questions, council? Mr. Hamilton?
The JW Harris, not only were they the little bit, but they've also been the provider of this service for a number of years, and we've been very satisfied with their performance, correct?
Yes, we have been. They've been working for us since 2017, about two years now.
Any other questions, Mr. Kundov?
I was just gonna ask, this is a budgeted item, and you have money in the budget to pay for it.
Correct, yes, we have the funds budgeted and available, yes.
Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 10.2?
If I could, my name is Rudy Michael. Mr. Mayor, council members, while I'm not deeply knowledgeable of the items being topic here, I believe that a recent council meeting, was there not a request to increase drilling related to the gas under the current contract? At a recent council meeting here?
Yes, there was. At the previous council meeting, we increased the purchase order on the current contract that expires at the end of this month, yes, because of the additional activity, construction activity of Pasco County.
When that, when that increase is added to the existing contract that existed, would that be equivalent or similar to this 4.5 million?
No, it's a little less than that.
You can ask the questions here if we want answered, you know, this is your opportunity to speak on the motion?
I apologize.
Not to question?
I apologize, Mr. Mayor, I just, I wasn't familiar with the full package, and I was just looking that the two packages were equal, and if they are, I appreciate and agree with the action of the council.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else from the public wishing to speak to Agenda Item 10.2?
Move approval of Agenda Item 10.2.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 10.2. Comments, council? Mr. Langill, clarify what that exchange was just all about.
Well, you know, we have a current purchase order with JW Harris, and we did ask for an increase of $1 million in the previous council meeting to cover our expenses for the construction activities. I think his question was, is that, you know, did that equal what we're asking for tonight at 4.5 million? And the answer is, I believe, it's less than that, it's not that total amount of 4.5 million. But I can always come back and give you that information if you would like to get the exact numbers.
If I could just maybe add a comment to that, the reason they came, that you came back for an additional funding for this year was because business was so good and we didn't have enough.
Correct.
In the fund to go forward with the current expansion for this.
Yes, they operate under the current bid prices, you know, per foot, per item bid prices, just like they will under this contract, but it's just the quantities, the number of miles, number of foot that we put in the ground has increased.
Exceeded.
It's exceeded over what we originally had budgeted for, yes.
Good point, thanks, Mr. Pogles. Any other questions, council or comments? Okay. We had the motion to, motion has been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 10.2. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. We concluded with 10.3 and 10.4. Mr. Horn, do you have anything further for us?
No, mayor.
Ms. Aiken, do you have anything further for us?
No, sir.
Closing comments, Mr. Hamilton?
Nope, just enjoying the nice weather, lots of business going on, and just keep on going.
Mr. Kundov?
Had a nice conversation later, earlier this afternoon with a young high school student, Sean Schrader, and he's been very active in the city, the Clearwater Neighborhood Coalition, I think he's the secretary for that organization now. He's graduating this year, and he's decided to start a nonprofit student peer mentoring service all across the county in the high schools. And this was an idea that he came up with on his own, and he's pushing forward to it, he's going next to the, to the school board to try to get their support, and I thought it was a wonderful, wonderful thing that a young high school student, Eagle Scout, also is planning to do. I also wanted to mention that the Paint Your Heart Out Clearwater is coming up in a couple of Saturdays, and they expect somewhere between 200 and 240, I think, individuals coming to help paint about 12 houses. And they're also still looking for donations for this worthy cause. You can go to Paint Your Heart Out Clearwater on Facebook. And this month also is Children's Art Month, and the Clearwater Arts Alliance reminded me that there is a display in the Carnegie Gallery right behind chambers here, and you're welcome to take a look at the artwork done by children, and I think it's largely local children, and I think you'll enjoy seeing the talent that our young people have here in Clearwater. Thank you.
Mr. Pogles?
Thank you, mayor. I went to the innkeeper's lunch today, and it was, it was very exciting to hear some of the news shared by the hoteliers, the restaurants. They're having just a crazy successful spring break, they're all doing very well, and interestingly enough, there was a rainy day this week, I believe, and they, they work together as a big team, and so they send their patrons, their guests, to businesses that don't necessarily need the sunshine. And Frank Dame was happy to report today that the Clearwater Marine Aquarium had their record-breaking attendance this week of 4,500 people passing through their doors in one day, so that was, that was good, exciting to hear. Thank you.
Thanks, Albert.
Well, I'm just glad to be back, enjoying this great weather we have. Where I was, it was a little cooler, so we're really lucky to be living here in paradise.
Well, let me, let me thank our colleagues for letting us be away. I've got to tell you all the story about my return flight from Washington. I got off the plane, the plane was gonna, a turnaround flight, and it was going to Philadelphia. And half the people who were in the waiting area to get on that flight to go to Philadelphia were wearing Philly jerseys or T-shirts, so obviously they must have just come from a ballgame and were leaving to go back to Philadelphia. It goes to something that we've been saying all along, that the entire area benefits by the Phillies being in Clearwater, supporting not only our businesses here in Clearwater, but staying in hotels throughout the county, visiting restaurants and doing activities, not just here at Spectrum Field, but really throughout the county. And we all benefit by that relationship that has existed since 1947. On behalf of the council, I want to thank or congratulate Anthony Berberijon, who is a senior at Countryside High School. Council, this is amazing, he is the state wrestling champion two years in a row. He is the state wrestling champion two years in a row. Last year, he won 52 out of 53 matches. This year, he won 55 out of 55 matches. So on behalf of all of us, congratulations, Anthony. You make the Countryside Cougars proud, but you make the entire city of Clearwater proud. And finally, again, on behalf of Mr. Albert and myself, let me congratulate Carla Diaz and Natalie Lamb for their contributions to the city. They were recognized while we were away, and if they're two people that have been very, that I've been gotten to know very closely, it's Carla and Natalie. And Natalie's gonna be leaving us, I believe. That has been, I'm not sure that's been announced publicly. It's being announced publicly now. But we're gonna be missing her when she leaves town the end of the month. It was, I guess that's about it. Thank you all for being here, spending part of your evening with us. NCAA Final Four March Madness is continuing, I think, at about 7:00 or 7:30. Hope your brackets are doing well, and we will see you. Our next council meeting will be, our next work session will be on April the 1st, and our next council meeting will be on April the 4th. And to the best of my knowledge, all five of us will be here at that time. With that, we are adjourned.